Welcome, everyone, to the April 23rd Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors Meeting. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's great to see everyone tonight. Just like to inform the public, here and at home, the Board of Supervisors held an executive session at 5:30 where we had discussed personnel. The Board of Supervisors also held a workshop at 6:30 where Mr. Mulholland spoke about looking at playground equipment and getting quotes. He spoke about Cleanup Day, which is this Saturday from 9:00 to 12:00, meeting at the Township Building. Mr. Everett spoke about the work at the Dolphin Club in regards to the courts, possibly looking into rumble strips being installed on certain Townships' roads. And he also spoke about the PA Small Water and Sewer Grant. Mr. Ryan spoke about the library forming a new employee handbook. He also spoke about how he is working on the ARPA report. And he told us that he is taking a cybersecurity class that he hopes to put good use here in the township. Mr. Italia spoke about improvements at the old laundry mat on Brownsville Road. He spoke about the citizens complaint portal up and running. He spoke about property maintenance compliance in our township. Mr. Coppins spoke about pump station grinder replacement on Page Court. He also spoke about storm sewer pipe replacement on Rosewood Avenue and installing GPS on township vehicles. And he also spoke about the 2025 paving project. Representatives from in regards to line item three came and discussed the project tonight. Chief Crimell spoke about enforcing no cut-through on Delway Ave. Ever since the Brownsville Road has been closed, people are taking detours, some of which they are not allowed to be taking. So we'll be looking into enforcing what people shouldn't be doing. And Mr. Dillon spoke about the intergovernmental agreement with Ben Salem Township and Lower South for crosswalks on Brownsville Road. Now, at this point, I would like to open the floor to public comment. If anybody would like to come up for public comment, please state your name, your address, if you could log it in the book. And there's always a three-minute time limit.
Yes, my name is Glenn Stevens. I live at 345 East Myrtle Avenue. And I definitely owe Mr. Italian apology. When I asked you what happened to the lawsuit you were going to have on me, I truly believe that you said that I refused the delivery from FedEx. But when I back and listen to and watch the YouTube, you definitely said I signed for it and ignored it. So I apologize for misquoting you, sir. It upset me very much. I asked you what your attorney's name was, and a week later you got back to me, and I spoke with him about it. And I asked him, you know, email spoke, I asked him if he could send me the FedEx stuff, the tracking and what it was. And he said that the point was moot. Well, honestly, my wife and I are scared to death. Someone was in our house waiting for the FedEx man, signed it, burned it, forged it, and then burned the missive from your attorney. We are very scared that there is someone in our house. Now, he gave me a couple of dates in September and July. I went through all of my door ring cameras. I keep, I pay extra for cloud space, so I never lose anything. And I couldn't find it anywhere. If you could talk to your attorney for me and ask him to please send me that information, then I could find the right date. Like, I went through weeks of it, the right date to find out where this imposter snuck into my house and forged my name, and also would show that forged name on the document. So I would very much appreciate that, and I apologize for misquoting you. I truly believed that you said I refused it, and it made me very angry. Now it's just made me scared. While apologizing, Mr. Dillon, I owe you an apology as well, sir. Mr. Dillon. Ah, there you are. See, at one point, you said, "I am the attorney for the township." I took that as to mean you cared about the taxpayers. But I was wrong, right? What basically you're saying is you take your orders from the people around you, right? From the other people up on the bench? So it's my ignorance that what you mean, I often misinterpret this. I have no legal training. I don't know this stuff. So when I called you corrupt on March 12th, that was wrong. You are not corrupt. You are simply following orders. Like, a gun doesn't kill somebody. It's the man holding it and pulling the trigger and aiming it. So you were told, I suppose, to protect Mr. Italia, and you're doing so. You don't care about the truth, right? Mr. Dillon, you don't care about the truth, right?
I'm not responding to your comments.
So you do care about the truth, sir? Maybe you could help me out. We know that the cop cam video was destroyed.
Mr. Stevens, your service officer. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you so much. I truly am sorry for calling you corrupt, sir. I'd misinterpreted what you said as caring about the taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Thank you. We appreciate it. Anybody else out there tonight for public comment? Say your name, your address, if you put it in the logbook. We'd appreciate it.
Sure. Hi, my name is Tara Kularis. I live at 1335 Red Cone Street. I just wanted to introduce myself. I saw in the Township News that there was an open position on the Feasterville Library Board. So I submitted my letter of intent and my resume. So I just wanted to put a name to, I mean, I'm sorry, a face to the name, and that I am very interested in that position. That's basically all I had to say. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kularis. Anybody else out there tonight for public comment? Going once, going twice. All right, we have a taker. Hello. State your name, your address.
Good evening. June Morecki, 515 East Pine Street, Trivos. I'll write down in a second. Regarding item number three, where for the development of that property on Bristol Road, if I understand correctly, there is an agreement for the contractor to provide 97 trees or fee for payment. And I'd just like to encourage the board to please take the trees and have the trees put in an appropriate park. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Morecki. We appreciate that. Thank you. Anybody else out there tonight for public comment? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Line one, A, approval of minutes, April 9, 2025. B, approval of accounts payable, April 23, 2025. C, approval of certain recurring monthly bills, April 23, 2025. D, approval of a $5,000 donation to Nishami's Summer Pass program. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda for April 23, 2025.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item two, approval of revision for conditional approval of land development application for 530 Clearview Avenue. Mr. Keely?
Thank you, sir.
Very nice to see you, sir. Thank you for coming out. We appreciate it.
Thank you. As you stated, this item number two is for the, to consider the approval of a revision to a conditional approval of land development for 530 Clearview Avenue. The applicant's, Carmen Petrella, I understand he has his engineer with him today. The application was initially submitted about two years ago to develop the property with a 5,000, approximately 5,500 square foot building to be used as a contractor shop. That was initially given conditional approval by the board at its regular meeting on March 27 of 2024. Construction began, but I believe there was a change in plans during the construction. The applicant submitted revised plans dated revision is March 12 of this year to our Township engineer. Our Township engineer has reviewed those revisions and issued a review letter to zoning officer Italia dated April 4, 2025. In connection with these revised plans, an additional waiver from the SALDO is being sought by the applicant relating to the driveway ordinance, driveway section, rather, of the SALDO Section 22-5103C to allow the 124-foot-wide driveway to exist, only 35 feet at the street line and 54 feet at the curb line are permitted. At this point, I'd like to now turn it over to the applicant and his engineer.
Good afternoon. My name's John Richardson. I'm here from Dumeck Engineering. Unfortunately, our legal counsel couldn't make it tonight. He was sick with the flu. As stated, the applicant was in construction, and the previously approved plan had two driveway accesses to the site. During construction, they noted that access to the site was somewhat difficult, given the narrowness of the road and the configuration of the lot with the building. They thought how they would like to modify the site, decided that widening the driveway to 135 feet would provide better access. It allows them to enter the site easier, not block the road while trying to make turning maneuvers, and it allows for better maneuverability in the site. We're not planning on modifying the building in any way. The building is staying the same size and shape and location. We are increasing the amount of paving surfaces, but that is an offset of the stone. So the net impervious surface doesn't change. We're just providing more pavement than we did before, and that was actually a waiver because of the Township requirements require stone. So we're actually kind of reducing that previous waiver request, and that was granted.
Terrific. Turn it over to Mr. Everett, if you have any additional commentary.
I have viewed the plans, and I've seen no issues. It's currently under construction. They're actually improving it by paving the stone that was previously approved. So I'm in favor of the plan.
Thank you. Now, a stormwater runoff?
Stormwater runoff, the impervious coverage is actually reduced from what was existing, but they are proposing a seepage bed that will control stormwater runoff from the roof.
Thank you.
And part of the conditions will be that the applicant will need to execute a stormwater management and operations agreement that's been prepared and sent to the engineer. I do have drafts of the resolution, I believe.
I do, yes.
I believe you should all have drafts as well with the exhibits. At this point, is there any discussion by the board?
I don't believe so. I guess we could put a motion on the floor at this time. The motion would read, "To adopt Resolution 2025-19 regarding the revision of the conditional approval of land development application for 530 Clearview Avenue and to authorize the Township manager to sign stormwater agreement." Do we have a motion?
Sound moved.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
We will give that to the young lady to my right. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you all very much, folks.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
Thank you. May be excused.
Great job.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening.
You take care. And we'll have Mr. Dillon come back up. He was really good, Mr. Dillon.
Hey!
All righty. Line item three, preliminary and final land development for 604 East Bristol, East Bristol PA owner LLC, 604 Bristol Road, Feasterville, PA. Mr. Dillon, sir.
Yes, Mr. Murphy.
Good evening. As we discussed during the workshop session, we're here tonight to, for the board to consider an approval of a preliminary or final land development plan for a storage facility located immediately north in the intersection of Bristol and Brownsville behind the Sunoco gas station. As I explained previously, the plan was originally approved in both April and in September of 2022 by Arizona Hearing Board and this body. Since then, the plan's been somewhat revised to make the building more efficient. We've reduced the overall square footage. We've reduced impervious surface by almost 5%. We've increased the preliminary buffers as well, reflecting the more economical use of the building. And Mr. Dillon has prepared a draft of an approval resolution which has been circulated and which we've discussed this evening as well as previously with staff. To answer the person's question that raised it before, as we talked about in the workshop, the approval resolution specifically provides that the total number of required tree plantings will be attempted to be planted on-site under the direction of staff. And to the extent that the site, our site physically can't accommodate all the required plantings, the resolution provides that we have agreed to plant those trees elsewhere in the township at the direction of the township staff, or again, at the direction of the staff. If you can't find places for all the trees, we would pay a fee low. So, but again, as I said earlier, the choice is not ours. The choice is the township. So we're good with that. We've showed you that we're still making all the same commitments for offsite or sidewalk on Brownsville and all the other operational conditions and restrictions that were put in place previously. They've been incorporated again in both the zoning hearing board decision and the draft of the approval resolution. So we're good.
Does the board have any questions?
I just want to reiterate that you've been in contact with the neighbors surrounding it. They've been notified. They're satisfied. We've had...
I think Mr. Italia addressed you at the work session and indicated that all the required notices have been forwarded, and everyone who's had an opportunity and wants an opportunity to comment again certainly has had it. You've had very good old recent public participation.
Thank you. And in regards to that, Mr. Perrotto, you know, since you're one of the newer members here, back when we had approved this the very first time, I do have to say they were very accommodating with the neighbors. I had reached out to, you know, to put your concerns aside. No brutal exchange. We get it. But they were, most of the neighbors were happier with a storage facility, low-impact traffic, you know, regulated hours compared to other possibilities there. So I, you know, I just wanted to get that out there. I know, you know, this plan has, people have been trying to work with the neighbors in regards to this. Very good to hear.
Is there any other, is there any public comment? See, I assume you have nothing else to offer, Mr. Murphy. So seeing none, I would suggest the motion to approve Resolution Number 2025-16 with one change, and that is the second, paragraph one zoning number two B, the second sentence is to be stricken.
Do we have a motion as stated by our board solicitor, Mr. Dillon?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Perrotto, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Mrs. Bowman, any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much, folks. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to line item four, consider approval of intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Ben Salem Township for the Brownsville Road crosswalk and adoption of Resolution 2025-17 authorizing appropriate officers of the township to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Ben Salem Township. Mr. Dillon, sir?
This is what's been referred to as the Brownsville Road Project. We are cooperating with Ben Salem to install the crosswalk, which is, and, okay, it's been referred to as the Shin Project as a result of the tragic death. We've been able to work out the details with Ben Salem, and we have Resolution 2025-17 and the intergovernmental agreement, which were mentioned in the proposed motion. Recommend that there be a motion to approve and authorize.
All right. So once again, just so we know, the motion would read, "To approve the intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Ben Salem Township regarding the Brownsville Road crosswalk and to adopt Resolution 2025-17 authorizing appropriate officers of the township to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Ben Salem Township." Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Castle, do we have a second?
Second.
Mrs. Bowman, any discussion from the board?
Purpose.
Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right. Moving on to line item five, consider adoption of Resolution 2025-18 authorizing PA Small Water and Sewer Program grant application. Mr. Everett, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. The township needs a resolution to apply for a grant for a project to reline 2,300 wheel feet and approximately 20 manholes in the C Station, Pump Station area. As that may be, the grant will be, the total amount would be for $304,920, and the township's responsibility is 15% of that, which equates to $45,738.
All right. Very good, Mr. Everett. So the motion would read, "To adopt Resolution 2025-18 authorizing PA Small Water and Sewer Program grant application." Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rodger. Thank you. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right. Now we move on to line item six, consider authorizing the advertisement for the ordinance appointing solicitor for the collection of delinquent real estate taxes. Mr. Ryan, sir?
This ordinance authorizes the advertisement to appoint Portnoy Law Associates as the solicitor for collecting delinquent real estate taxes, accounts, and certain unpaid sewer and trash fee accounts.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Ryan. So I know the board has discussed this previously, even earlier tonight also. So the motion would read, "To authorize the advertisement for the ordinance appointing a solicitor in the collection of delinquent real estate taxes." Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Rodger. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle. Any discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right. Line item seven, consider appointment to the library board. So in front of us tonight, we have, unfortunately, one of our former library members had to leave her term a little early. We have five names in front of us, and we need to appoint a new member, folks. So would anybody like to throw out a motion for one of the five members?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a statement. There were five people that have offered to serve the community, which is honorable, and I'm pleased to see such a response. Whoever the board picks, the other four, I want to thank you for offering your services. And there always is going to be another opening somewhere, someday, sooner than later. So if you don't make it tonight, that's okay. There'll always be a tomorrow, but I just wanted to thank the five applicants for putting their names in.
Well said. Thank you, Mr. Castle. So at this time, do we have a motion for an appointment for the library board term, term starting tonight, ending January 2026? Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make that motion. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Tara Kularis to the library board for a term ending January 2026.
Very good. So we have a motion for Ms. Kularis. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. Any discussion from the board? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Congratulations, Mrs. Kularis. We appreciate you coming out tonight, too. That was very nice. All right. Line item eight, consider authorizing Township manager to sign PennDOT required forms and plans for various intersections along Bustleton Pike. Mr. Gatto, sir?
Thank you, Board Chair. This is working in conjunction with SAI with certain particular issues, one being the LED fire sign, fire station sign at Bustleton Pike and Irving Place. The other is the "Don't Block the Box" also at Bustleton Pike and Irving Place. And I believe the flashing speed limit sign at Bustleton Pike and Roland Avenue. Two other additional items that they, that they're looking for, for us to work on, is the radar speed displays, one at Bustleton Pike at First Street and Bustleton Pike at Franklin Avenue. So we would need approval from me to sign those particular PennDOT documents.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you there, Mr. Gatto. So the motion would read, "To authorize Township manager to sign various PennDOT required permits and plans for several intersections along Bustleton Pike." Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Line item number nine, personnel employment agreement for police lieutenant. Mr. Perrotto, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to make a motion to rescind the previous employment agreement between the Township and Lieutenant Gerald Scott approved at the April 9, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting and replace it with a new employment agreement. The agreement in front of the board tonight has the exact same language and conditions that were agreed to on the April 9, 2025 agreement, but with the addition of conditions pertaining to fringe benefit and application of the drop program. This agreement is exclusive to Lieutenant Scott.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. So do we have a motion as stated by Mr. Perrotto?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rodger. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right. Moving on to the manager's report. Mr. Gatto, sir?
Thanks, Board Chair. This Saturday, again, Township Cleanup Day has, I believe, around 50 volunteers showing up. If anybody else would like to volunteer, you can contact the Recreation Department. It starts at 9:00 a.m. here at the Administration Building. Sanitation rebates continue on May 31. 973 rebates have been issued. $48,650 have been rebated back to the residents. And that's all I have, Board Chair.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Gatto. Moving on to supervisors' comments. Ladies first, Mrs. Bowman.
Just a quick note from our tax collector, Deb Donnicker. She will be here if you're coming out to volunteer Saturday morning. Her office is open. If you'd like to stop by and pay that tax bill, it's due by April 30. She did post an announcement that she will be open and accepting payments on Saturday morning. Also wanted to thank everybody for their patience while we are going through some major PennDOT projects. I know it is a huge inconvenience, but the upside is a little bit of inconvenience, and our roads are going to look great, and they're going to be fixed appropriately. The Brownsville Road Bridge was a safety issue that got postponed from COVID. So I personally, I'm hugely impacted by that bridge being closed, but I am thankful that it's being fixed before a catastrophe happens. So please use some patience, add some extra time when you're on the road, and please do not cut through the neighborhoods where it is marked. Do not cut through the neighborhood. So use your common sense, because we will have police presence out, and you may get a ticket if you do go down one of those streets that you're not supposed to go down. Other than that, it's getting warm out. The kids are out on the bikes. Please use caution when you're driving in the morning with the school bus crossings and after school when the kids are out playing. So, and I hope everybody had a blessed Easter.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Bowman. Mr. Perrotto, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to thank everybody that's come out and participated in tonight's meeting. It's very important to stay involved in your community. As Mr. Castle said, to those applicants that weren't chosen tonight for the library board, please stay involved. We need volunteers everywhere. I understand that, you know, that was your choice, but there's other vacancies available in the township, and just contact Mr. Gatto, Township Manager, and, you know, he'll direct you to what, how to apply for those vacancies. direct you to what, how to apply for those vacancies. Otherwise, I hope everybody did have a happy Easter, and I just wish you well, be safe, and we'll see you in two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. Mr. Ottinger, sir.
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight, all right. Mr. Castle, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's always an honor to go before you. I, like Mr. Perrotto, want to thank our audience tonight and those who are watching at home for participating in your local government. We're here to serve you. We're not above you, and we love when you come forward and offer your suggestions, whether we agree with them or not. That's your privilege of coming here. Please sign up for emails from the township for updates, agendas for board meetings, emergencies, and they are available at lowersouthamptontownship.org. You might get one a week. It's not oppressive. Our Parks and Recreation has dozens of programs for this summer. Please check the Lower Southampton Spirit. There'll be a one or two full-page ads in the spirit that gets mailed to every home in the township. Or get your free emails where we post those programs. Our fire department is always looking for volunteers. We don't have a paid department around here. Several years ago, I had an emergency at my house, and I had more firemen all over the neighborhood and alerting the neighbors with all their red lights. But they provide a service that you cannot get anywhere else, and it's life-saving. And tonight, we have two members of our fire department seated to my left over here, Mr. DeJesus and Mr. Jenkins. We won't say their nicknames, but they're always looking for volunteers, and I appreciate that. Unfortunately, we had a rain out on our first Friday at the Play Wiki Farm, and so we're looking forward to our next major event. That will be in the email. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
I know one thing you forgot.
I was just going to say that.
Go ahead. Go ahead. All right. Our next meeting will be May fourteenth at seven thirty, and at this time, can I get a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries, everyone. Thank you very much.